Okay, we'll call the May meeting of the Troy Planning Board to order. Would you stand please and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'll call the role Jim Scully.
Here.
Tony Dickinson.
Here.
Jeff York.
Here.
Peter Kio present. All members of board are present. We have a quorum. First order of business is PLPC 2023 0045. The applicant present. Anyone here representing 185 Earl Street Project? There. Thank you.
Eric, would you be able to pull our site plans up? I also have a flash drive. While he's pulling that up, we'll do some quick introductions. My name is Courtney Davis with LaBella Associates. With me tonight is Greg O'Connor with Architecture Plus, and we're here to talk to you again tonight about the Unity House Teaching Kitchen Project.
We want to get through this meeting because there's a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, but you were just talking a little too fast. I can't quite catch it.
Sorry. I'll start over. My name is Courtney Davis with LaBella Associates. This is Greg O'Connor with Architecture Plus, and we are here to discuss Unity House's Teaching Kitchen Project at 185 Earl Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for pulling up my site plans. If you scroll down to the next sheet for me, please. So we discussed this project with you all last month, but before we jump in, wanted to kind of give a brief recap of where we started versus where we are now. So Unity House is proposing to renovate and add a 495 foot square foot addition to an existing residential structure. As you can see here, so the white box is the existing building, gray is the new addition. Site work is going to be fairly, sorry, they're going to create a teaching kitchen for skill development. Site work is going to be fairly limited just because the overall parcel is fairly small compared to the building footprint. We're going to provide a concrete accessible ramp out front with concrete stairs in the back. As part of our previous proposal to you all, we were planning to use the existing Unity House owned dumpsters across the street for trash instead of having onsite trash simply for operational efficiency. But because of that, we left the last meeting kind of with two items that we needed to address. One, we needed a zoning variance in order to do that. And two, if the zoning variance was granted, we would need to provide some sort of pedestrian improvements to Earl Street for the safety of whoever is responsible for bringing the trash across the street to the existing dumpsters. So since we last saw you all, we presented to the zoning board. They did deny our request for zoning variance because Unity House does own the parcel to the north. And as such, they deemed that it was unnecessary because we could provide dump or garbage facilities onsite with a access easement on the adjacent parcel. So if oh, hang on. Oh, these aren't our most current site plans. I apologize. Here. Yeah. Sorry, Eric. And then next sheet for me. Appreciate your help. Yep, C 130. You were good. Back up one. Perfect. These are not them. Yeah, no, it was the one that we submitted to you after the fact because of the easement and the trash enclosure. I do have a flash drive. If you could pull that up. I don't know if that's faster for you.
Yeah.
Yep. And then the second page, please. There we go. All right. So this plan kind of shows what we've changed since our zoning variance got denied. So in the back, we have added adjacent to the concrete stairs, a small trash enclosure, which would be large enough to hold two standard sized trash bins. It has stock gate fencing around it, six foot tall. There'll be a gate on the one end, and then there's concrete walkway that we added. And we also proposed an asphalt walk to connect to the adjacent property, simply so that you're rolling your trash bins out on hard surfaces. And then this blue hatch that you can see over here, that is the proposed access easement so that whoever is taking the trash out, say this property was ever sold or vice versa, that this property still has a way to get trash from the rear of the building to the street for pickup. So with this new site plan, we believe that we have eliminated the need for zoning variance. And as such, I think we have addressed the pedestrian and safety concern as it relates to bringing trash out to the dumpsters. And we think that the proposed trash enclosure that we're providing meets all of the city's zoning requirements. Greg, do you have anything you'd like to add? Yes, sorry, two garbage cans. Yeah. So if any of you all have any questions or comments?
So basically you're saying that the zoning board said that preferable to a zoning variance would be for you to do it onsite. That you didn't need the variance.
Yeah.
And they weren't therefore not inclined to grant the variance.
Exactly.
Thank you. Board members' questions?
Yeah, I also, did I read? You were going to have the crosswalk, you're going to have striping on the road or whatever and signs. And did I also see where you were taking out one of your parking spots to bring that across instead of having it diagonal or whatever?
Yep. So when we did initially submit to you guys, it was before we had gone before zoning. So that was part of the going under the assumption that we were going to get the variance that we were requesting. So we were planning to provide that crosswalk, some signage, and then stripe out an existing parking stall in the parking lot across the street. But since the garbage is now going to be kept onsite, we have since removed those items from the site plans.
Okay, so you don't have anybody, anybody from Unity House going across Earl Street to go into this building to do your kitchen?
There will be. We were addressing the concern of garbage crossing the street and people taking it to the dumpster and back and forth, which is the reason why we were providing the crosswalk. But if there is a need to provide that, I mean, certainly add it back in. We felt it was just for the addressing.
So it's going to be more random traffic than regular traffic you would have had with the trash removal?
Correct.
I still think they need a crosswalk because if the people are coming across Earl Street to the new kitchen area, I think, I mean, Earl Street is not heavily traveled. I know that, but there at least should be something saying that, you know, there's people going to be crossing there.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't mind adding it back in. We just didn't want to give the assumption that we're going to the dumpsters. If it's just a concern for pedestrians crossing, then that's fine.
Any other questions for it? Okay, thank you. Just we'll see if the public has any comments. Any member, is there any member of the public here to comment on this proposal? No? Okay, then I guess it's here for final approval. I think the Corporation Council is recommending if we do give approval that we'll be conditioned upon providing a copy of the easement to Corporation Council for approval as a condition of the final approval. So, and then Tony, do you also want to make a condition that they include the crosswalk in their plan?
Yes.
Is that sufficient just to include it in the, in the finding? Okay, so is there a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the project based on those two conditions, the one being the crosswalk and the presentation of the easement to the corporate council.
Second?
I second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Discussion on the motion. Do we have to call the rule? Just all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Good luck with your project there, folks. So I neglected to address the issue of minutes of last meeting. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes to April's meeting.
Thank you, Tony. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item is PLPB 2025 0017, 285 Pauling Avenue. Folks.
All right. Good evening. Again, Kevin Johnson with Consigli Construction. With me, Chris Harkett, our superintendent with Consigli, Brian Deone with our Design Architect SWBR, and Scott Kosnick with the Everwellard School. We're here on behalf of Everwellard School for the new faculty housing project within their campus. So you know, what we, what we are proposing and what we were here last time to present is four new town home style buildings, 12 total units. In addition to that includes the demolition of Tangent Hall all on campus as part of this project. You know, last meeting, we had a couple of items, some zoning variances that we needed to pursue, which we were since approved of on 5-7, along with a few other minor comments, urban control and runoff plan, which we've submitted, the SWIP, which we had submitted, and short term bike storage, along with some fire department comments, which we've since cleared up, all within our new site application, but we're here for approval on the project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? So the staff is satisfied with the, with the responses to the previous issues? I guess we'll see if there's any public comment on this first of all. Is there any member of the public here to comment on this application? No? Okay, thank you. I guess previously we recognized this as a unlisted action, so I think we need to make it secret determinations, negative declarations. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we have a negative declaration for secret.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Okay. So we have a motion that the application is complete.
I'd like to move to declare this application complete.
I second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. So now we schedule a hearing.
To make a motion to schedule a hearing for the next meeting.
Which would be June 7.
Are we sure a hearing is required or are they just seeking safe point approval right now?
Are we sure a hearing is required or are they seeking safe point approval?
Just to clarify, we need applications.
So now they're just seeking a hearing?
So yes, again.
We are not able to declare an application complete and have a hearing in the same night. There's one more meeting.
It's the code. I think we're sympathetic to that, but I don't think we have any choice. It's not our choice to do that. We'd prefer to just wrap it up, I think.
So let's do that tonight.
Code doesn't, doesn't allow it. Do we have an option?
Randy required that seeker be declared complete before application was, seeker was declared determined before an application was declared complete.
Because you have to have public notice of hearing too, right?
Sorry, it's required.
Yeah, we're not, I'm sorry that that has to be that way, but we don't have a choice. So was, we've scheduled, this motion to schedule a hearing for the next meeting, June 17. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimous. We'll see you next month, unfortunately. You have a question?
If we were declared with negative declaration last meeting, is that not change any of our status tonight?
No, the determination of completeness is the issue. We couldn't do that until tonight, and then we can't have a hearing on the same night.
Okay, so the last planning meeting will be a hearing for approval the next meeting?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We should, we should look at that.
I agree.
More than that.
The next item is PLPC 2025 0006, 18 to 20 Stowe Ave. Hi.
Hello, everyone. My name's Dan Carlin. I'm project supervisor for Hudson Valley Home Restoration here tonight with Frank Brandt, the property owner. We're here with our proposal for 18 through 20 Stowe Avenue, a six unit residential building that burned down, I guess, two years ago. One thing I did notice on the plans is the architect has the front and back mislabeled. I noticed that after we submitted. The front and back of the building she has mislabeled, so it just needs to be reversed.
Okay.
Last time we were here, we got, we got our staff report. We hired a civil engineer, did all reports, and I think we covered everything that was on that list. And I just wanted to see if there's recommendations.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? If not, we'll see if there's any public comment. Is there any member of the public here to comment on this application? Yes, come forward, please. Identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Hogan. I live at 14 Prince Street, which is just down from there. My concern with that property is the fact that there's zero parking. There's no parking in that area on Stowe Ave. You can only park on one side of Stowe Ave currently. So we're, you would be adding, this is going to be a five unit building. I believe the code stands, you need to have one space for 1.25 cars per unit, if I'm not mistaken. And the only other parking is on St. Michael's Avenue, which is very narrow. And there's no parking on that street as well, based on the people who currently live in that area. And it is a one way street, St. Michael's Ave, so it only empties out onto Morrison Ave. And in the winter time, all of St. Michael's Ave becomes a sheet of ice. I mean, when I say sheet ice, I mean like glacier ice, like two to three feet thick sometimes, which all pours out onto Stowe Avenue. And the city constantly has to come and salt the lower section of Stowe Avenue to keep people from sliding down the hill and through the tracks. So now we're adding additional cars on the street with zero place for parking. And my other concern is, once again, I still have is traffic. The, there's a, there's already a massive amount of traffic since they've built various apartment complexes up on top of the hill, on the top of Morrison. And no one wants to go out onto Morrison Ave, so they all cut through and down Stowe Ave, which is already a heavily crowded, traveled road for the amount of people that live in that area. So my, my concern is the fact that the lot is only 50 feet wide. The building is 37 feet wide. You have three feet easement on one side, and then you only have a 10 foot space on the other. My concern also would be fire access to the back of that building. A 10 foot wide is not getting a fire truck back there. It seems like they're trying to jam in an awful lot into a very small lot. I know the lot is deep, but it's not, it's only a double lot, double city lot, and we're going to add a five unit apartment building.
Thank you. What was there before?
There was a, like an old row house, two double, they were like Siamese together.
Four units or five units?
Oh, there were four units in there. But I know the woman that used to own it prior. She owned it for years, and basically she rented to people who didn't have cars. So there was never really an issue with, with parking based on that property. When most were, they were mainly low income families or individuals. So they didn't, they didn't have cars. Man, I've lived down there my entire life. So I see what's happening on Stowe Ave, but just, you know, if you've ever been in the area, you turn onto Stowe Ave, there's a, the city bus comes up, goes up there. If you were to turn from 378 onto Stowe Avenue, if you, if people park all the way down to the end, nothing's getting up there. And it's, it's just a very narrow street with parking on one side alone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. So do you want to address those issues, please?
That, that has always been a six unit building. It was before it burned down. That's what we drew up. So we tried to put a driveway with parking spots in the back. I think it's too tight to even have the driveway there, so I think we were going to eliminate that anyway. I didn't think that parking was required. It was preferred, but I don't believe it was required for that building.
So are you not going to have the driveway now?
We have it at, we have the driveway in there now, but there's only eight feet. And that's kind of tight for a driveway. The property owner asked if we can remove the driveway if parking was mandatory in the back or if it's just something that you guys were requesting.
So it would be no driveway and no parking?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Did the, did the fire department comment on this? Last time, did we have something from the fire department?
They don't have any more concerns about the project.
Okay, board members, discussion?
Eric, I see on the staff recommendation that they changed the size of the windows. Are they on the left? On the left side? Am I seeing that in their new plans? No, they're changing.
The, the, the large expansive wall, just had smaller windows. Wondered what, what was the reason for that? If there's going to be any sort of transparency impact on that?
I'm sorry, we can absolutely change those windows as recommend, as a recommendation from the staff. Didn't have time to do that before this.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought.
So is it correct that zoning doesn't require any parking for this project?
Yeah, that's great.
There's another change. Yeah. Any further discussion? This, the next order of business would be a motion to declare the application complete if you find it's complete.
Might want to put on the record that you recognize this is a type two, so seeker review is not required.
All right. So why don't we do that first motion to recognize this?
Make a motion to declare this is a type two, so it's not required.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries unanimous. So then a motion would be in order to declare the application complete if you find it to be so. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to declare the application complete.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. You all set?
You got a scheduled hearing?
Scheduled for public.
All right. So motion to schedule a hearing the next meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to schedule a hearing for the June 17, I believe, for a public hearing.
A second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item is PLPC 2025 0001, 2751 Fifth Avenue. The applicant representative here? Yes.
Good evening. Kelsey Carr, the civil engineer for the project with LaBella Associates, and I'm joined by Dumeet Gupta with Five Corners Development, as well as Angela Eisholt, who's on Zoom with Home Leasing. We also have the project attorney on Zoom, Betsy Brug, and we have Mark Wright, our environmental consultant from HRP here tonight. So we first presented this project to you guys back in January. We then returned in March to provide an update on minor design changes and an overview of the five area variances that are being requested. The site layout and architectural design have not changed since we last presented to you. However, in response to questions and comments received and to support the seeker determination, we have submitted supplemental materials that include a letter from SHIPO indicating that the project will have no impact on historic resources, a letter from the project geotech engineer indicating that the building will be supported on sound bedrock and will not affect the stability of the slope at the rear of the site, as well as two letters from HRP, the project environmental consultant. One, summarizing the results of the environmental site assessments performed and how that impacts the site redevelopment and the soil remediation. And the second, providing an overview of the New York State DC Brownfield Cleanup Program, which our team will be submitting an application for as soon as we receive approvals through you guys. So we have Mark from HRP here tonight if you have additional questions related to the soil remediation or the BCP. But with that summary, we are here tonight seeking a seeker determination so that the ZBA can move forward with the review of the area variances.
Thank you. So previously, this, I think your previous application identified it as a type one action. Is that correct?
So we've gone back and forth on that, but we, we originally submitted as unlisted and then had received. we originally submitted as unlisted and then had received, um, information that related to the historic resources that may have triggered a type one. However, with a letter of no impact from SHIPO, we do feel that this would be an unlisted action. Um, but a coordinated review with the 30-day circulation was completed.
So first. Okay, well, thank you. We'll deal with that. Thank you. Is there, is there any member of the public here to comment on this application? No? Okay, so I think, uh, first order of business would be to recognize this as, uh, unlisted action rather than a type one action. Is there a motion to that effect?
After I move it, okay. I, um, make a motion that we list seeker as unlisted for this project.
Second. I'll second that. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The motion carries unanimously. Uh, so then next item would be to make a secret determination. Uh, if you are inclined to make a negative determination, city, uh, staff is recommending that it be a conditional negative declaration conditioned on certain items that I will articulate. Uh, and then you can consider if you want to go in that direction. So one would be conditioned upon, uh, provision of a health and safety plan. Condition on a site management plan. Conditioned on a certificate of completion from the DEC with respect to cleanup. And following, uh, brownfield requirements, uh, for these DEC requirements for cleanup. Was there, was there another condition? What, is there a motion or a discussion on that proposed motion?
It's out last week, so, last month. I'm not up to speed on this.
Conditional? Yeah, yes.
Make a motion for a negative unconditional declaration for seeker.
On the conditions that I articulated. Thank you. Is there, a second?
I second that.
Thank you. So discussion on that motion. Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say no. And the motion carries unanimously. So the, uh, I think that further action by us is subject to action by the zoning board of appeals. So it would be in order to table this. Uh, unless you have further discussion or questions for the applicant. Table it until after zoning board action?
Yeah, I'd move to table this until we get zoning, they get zoning approval.
Second?
A second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The motion carries unanimously.
Are we not able to declare the application complete tonight? Because otherwise we would need two more.
I believe in the, I think the application is already declared complete.
Oh, it was?
In previous meetings.
We could do it again.
Really?
Or change our mind. Okay, next item. PLPC 2024-005374, New Turnpike Road. New Turnpike.
Nobody's asking this.
Good evening. Andy Brick from Brick Law Firm on behalf of the applicant Gulfstream developers. Uh, with me is Karen Majewski from Bowler, as well as Anthony Casal, uh, the project applicant. We were here, um, a few meetings ago, uh, seeking a, um, negative declaration on the seeker. Uh, you had articulated some concerns about, uh, further investigation and requested that we conduct a phase two environmental assessment of the property. Uh, as you recall, this is the former Leonard Hospital. The phase one had identified some things, uh, the board had some concerns and asked us to conduct the phase two. We conducted the phase two and we submitted the, uh, results to the city, and I believe they've, they've been reviewed. And, um, I think the city, uh, staff is, is supportive of, uh, issuing or considering a neg deck this evening, uh, and that issue being resolved. I would also point out that, as you recall from the site plan, uh, there is a water course that touches one corner of our property. Under the new DEC wetland regulations, there was a question whether or not they, um, would regulate either that water course or, um, the 100-foot buffer from that course. Uh, we had submitted, um, a parcel determination to DEC. And under the new regs, if they don't respond within a certain timeframe, um, then you are exempt from their application of their new regulations for a period of five years. Um, as of yesterday, their time to respond to us has officially expired. So we believe that we are exempt from the DEC new wetland regulations related to this property. We will still be subject to Army Corps regulations. But we are not doing anything related to the stream or the stream bed itself. Um, we are building probably within 50 feet of it. We're doing some grading, but we're not touching the stream itself. So we don't need any type of permit from Army Corps of Engineers either. So with those two environmental considerations wrapped up, we believe, uh, we think we're in a position for, um, you to consider a negative declaration this evening. We also have a number of, uh, minor updates to the site plan based upon some of the comments and concerns you raised at the last meeting. So, uh, at this time, I turn it over to Karen to briefly walk you through those.
Good evening. Karen Majewski from Bowler Engineering for the record. Our most recent, uh, site plan exhibit is shown here. From an overall project standpoint, we are still at the 86 homes, um, that we've had previously. But a couple of the major changes were the parking count. It was discussed prior. We had maybe too little, then we had maybe too much. Um, so I think we're at a good place with that, but wanted to share that with you this evening. We're at about 1.5 spaces per home. So the previous plan that the city saw had about 201 spaces for the 86 homes. And we brought that down to about 137, so we're right around that one and a half, uh, mark. So that there's adequate home, uh, parking for homeowners, but also some flexibility and visitor spaces and/or if somebody needs two spaces, um, that is there. What that also did was increase the green space and landscaping. As you can see, it's not one straight row of uninterrupted parking. It's been broken up with the landscape islands and some trees and shrubs as well to give it more of an aesthetic feel. And the other thing we've done based on comments received from the city and from this board was the area in the center of the site where there's two rows of homes that would essentially back up to one another. Uh, we've gone ahead and pulled those apart further. We heard the comment that maybe they were too close back to back. Um, so what was previously 11 feet between the homes in the rear is now a minimum of 19 feet in the center and some of that being larger. So you can see that reflected here.
How, how did you accomplish that?
Green space. So in order to do that, we pulled them apart and turned some of the parking to have parallel parking since we didn't need as much parking. Um, so you can see that here where some of that pavement and parking looks skinnier. Um, there's a few parallel spaces that are there, which gives us more depth for the homes in the green space. So, um, from a plan standpoint, those were the major, uh, changes. And I did just want to mention too, that we received the, uh, SHIPO sign-off that was submitted in your packets as well as in the last meeting.
Are the parking spaces assigned or first come, first served?
Uh, first come, first serve as of now. Um, maybe there's signage proposed later. Um, but we did keep parking around each home. So there's more green space islands versus just clustering the green space in one area.
So are your buildings still 11 feet apart on the sides?
Yes. Yes, code is 10. This, if we were to have city lots or requirements like that, um, it would be 10-foot separation. So we're at 11.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
We also submitted, which I think you've seen in your packet, a lighting plan and a landscaping plan, uh, as requested by staff. So, um, we do think that we are, uh, in a position for you to consider site plan approval this evening. Um, but, um, that would be up to you. Uh, we would definitely request that you consider the seeker negative declaration. So that will allow us to go to the city council so they can conduct their public hearing on the PDD. Um, and if you would consider site plan approval this evening with conditions, we would go with that approval in hand. Um, or we would go to the city council for their public hearing and then return to you for site plan approval down the road.
Okay, thank you. Is there any member of the public here to comment on this application? Yes.
Hi, everybody. Steven Maples, uh, Second Street. Um, just going to echo a comment I had from the last time that, um, this is a, the, the the improved, uh, parking plan is a lot better. There is still a lack of pedestrian crossing within the, the plan, and there's still not connection to the, uh, system outside of the site. Um, so there's not the pedestrian circulation to the street itself. And within, there's, it's a senior facility having those crossings marked, preferably raised crossings would be even better, but at the very least marked crossings. Uh, especially when you're looking at like the, um, the recreational areas and things like, things like that. Um, with the addition of the, uh, sections in the parking plan, that it makes that process just that much easier, a shorter crossing to install. So I would just add that, um, I think that would still be a great thing to have in the site plan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to comment on this proposal? All right, thank you. So, uh,
Can I say something? May I ask the gentleman something? Um, at your last meeting, I had made a recommendation that maybe you got rid of your As and Bs and just did Cs and Ds. I still think this is way too dense. Um, did anybody look into that?
And we did look into it, um, but from a marketability standpoint and an affordability standpoint, um, we think this optimizes, uh, the, the best use of the property. Uh, it, it, it gives a different price point, uh, with having the ABCs and Ds. Um, and this, this is from a marketability standpoint and price point standpoint, what, what we're gonna propose, what we think is the best use of the property.
Okay, I still think it's too dense.
Do you have a rebuttal to gentleman's comments about, uh, accessibility, walking, and, uh?
I wouldn't rebut it. I mean, it's a great idea. We should show maybe some raised pedestrian crossings at the, um, access points to New Turnpike Road. That from a planning perspective, I think that was a great idea. No objection to it at all.
So are you gonna, you're gonna concede that, put that in your plan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, so I think the first order of business would be to recognize this is a type one. Excuse me? Is there a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to declare this is a seeker type one.
Uh, second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries unanimously. Second, uh, would be determination, uh?
I'd like to, uh, determine this, uh, as a negative de- decoration on a seeker.
Second?
I second that.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. And motion carries unanimously. Uh, we need to schedule a hearing.
So.
Application is. So on our staff reports with everything going back and forth with Detroit Fire and Detroit Police, this is all going to be resolved.
Are you asking me? Uh, yeah, I, I mean, my, my understanding is that the applicant is in talks with the fire department right now.
Yes, um, and, and it will all be resolved. Uh, basically, we have to do it the fire department's way. So that's the way it's gonna be done.
Last I spoke with Deputy Chief, uh, Behringer, he had mentioned that he was okay with everything that was being planned right now.
So procedurally, we're now at the point where this goes back to the council.
Well, I think, I think you can determine, uh, whether or not the application is complete and schedule a public hearing. In the meantime, they can go to the council.
I'd like to make a motion to declare the application complete.
Second?
I second that.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. And the motion carries.
And then I'd like to make a motion to the, to schedule a hearing on June 17th.
They have to go before, they have to get a PDD.
Pending PDD, right?
Pending, yeah, pending PDD.
Will that, will that be put on their next city council board meeting?
The next city council meeting is June 5th. Uh, well, actually, the next one is Thursday, but that's the finance committee. The next regular meeting is June 5th. Question is whether or not, and forgive me for not knowing this offhand, whether or not, I think the council has to have a public hearing.
They do.
On this, so, uh, it might complicate, it might delay it a little bit, so.
Two months.
So next available meeting?
Next, next, next meeting after the council determination on the PDD?
That would be fun.
Is that your motion then?
Yeah, so I'd like to move to, uh, uh, schedule a public hearing after they have approval from the council on their PD, PDD.
Okay. Second? Discussion? Tony, question, any comments? Okay, uh, further discussion on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. And the motion carries unanimously.
We will be back as soon as we possibly can. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Tony, are you voting yes when you're quiet? You really need to go yes or no.
I'm watching your eyes blink.
I see the unhappiness, so I don't know which way it's going.
Uh, new business. The next item is PLPB 2025-0027, 416 Third Street. The applicant, uh, here, representative? Hi, how are you? All right, take your time.
Daniel Hersford of Hersford and Hersford here for the applicant, St. Joseph's Church. They would like to expand their existing parking. He submitted what really was a concept plan showing what he wanted to do. We wanted to get some comments back. We did get the, uh, staff comments. We're prepared to do the transportation demand study. We are prepared to add the, uh, four EV stations that would be required. Add them going for a variance. And we're prepared to add additional, we'll need one additional handicap spots. All those were prepared to do. Uh, we did do a drainage, uh, sign on it. It had been approved by Richard Rees previously, but Richard's been, um, replaced by someone else. And I think it went, go through his office too. But that, uh, we think that that would.
You're referring to, uh,
To Rusty.
Our city engineer, Mr. Rees.
I'm sorry, Rusty. The new city engineer.
Hey, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Hersford?
Let's add the, the other issue, the other issues are, we will add some landscaping on that Center Island. Um, some, um, some shade trees on that Center Island as requested. We think we'd like the row of Arbor Vida alone. I think it'll look straight. I think it'd look strange to break it up with Arbor Vidae and then shade trees, but we could do it all with shade trees or just do the shade trees on the island. We're open to any suggestions or recommendations regarding landscaping. Other than that, I think the other, the other items on there are easily addressed and we'll be back. We'll address those. We can, we can get those in before the end of this month, so we can qualify to be on the June 17th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So first order of business would be to recognize this as an unlisted action. Is your motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we declare this an unlisted seeker.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. So next item would be to consider issuing a negative deck or provide the applicant with a list of items that you would need it to be able to do so. Anybody have ideas on that? Are you comfortable with issuing a negative declaration?
Yeah, I'd like to move to make this a negative declaration or seeker.
Second?
I second it.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously. So. Application's complete? Is your motion to declare the application complete?
I make a motion that we declare the application complete for 416 Third Street.
Second?
I second that.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously.
Make a motion that we schedule this for a June 17th hearing.
Second?
I second that also.
Motion made and seconded to set this for a hearing on June 17th. Okay, sir. Discussion on motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is PL PB 2025-0028, 0 Farrington Avenue, also known as 170 Winter Street.
Good evening. Luke Michaels, Michaels Group Home, applicant for 0 Farrington Avenue. So what we have here, Eric will pull up my survey and proposed survey. Thank you. We have two parcels. Addresses are 170 and 172 Winter Street Extension. Both those parcels are serviced by North Green Bush. And what we're looking for tonight is a approval for adjusting some lot lines in the rear, which will ultimately create one additional parcel. So currently, there's two. Some lot line changes will create one larger parcel in the rear. The reason we're here tonight is we're in Troy where these, both these homes are serviced by North Green Bush, as I mentioned. The Troy city line comes through the back of the property, and the majority of the acreage remains in Troy. So if you'd like to, I'm just going to grab this so I can point out some lines here. So up here at the front of the site, so right here, we have two existing homes. This is number 170 right here, and this is number 172. 170 is about a quarter acre parcel with the rear lot line right here. 172 is about a nine and a half acre parcel and extends from here, comes down through here, and then this entire piece in the back. This back section is accessed by Taft Avenue in the city of Troy. So what we're proposing to do with some lot lines is this line right here from where the back line is, extend this easterly shared property line all the way to the back of this parcel. This will leave 172 Winter Street on its own parcel right here, a little over one acre. This rear lot line on the existing 170 would be removed. We do a diagonal line right here where this property chokes down. This number 170 Winter Street extension would be about a half acre parcel. And that would leave this entire rear area right here. And this would all be one large lot, about eight and a half acres, all said and done, after the lot line adjustments, bringing access to this parcel from the rear. We plotted a house on here, which one day could be built. But the access would come from here with the driveway up in the middle of the property, accessing city water from Taft Ave as well.
And did you say this, is there a municipal line in there someplace between Troy and?
Yes, yes, the, the dividing line between Troy and North Green Bush is right here. So when you, you know, behind these houses, that's into the Troy. Yes.
So that part is Troy.
Yes.
The houses are actually in, is that North Green Bush?
Yes, yep. We have a letter from North Green Bush indicating that they serve both houses with utilities and services. So.
What these lines are in Troy?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, that's, that's why we're here is for, since we're in Troy, we're looking for the lot line adjustments to happen within Troy.
Okay, thank you.
This is going to end up being one big parcel.
Correct, yes. Two existing houses here. This will be about a half acre. This will be a little over an acre. This will be a little over eight acres all back here. One parcel serviced from Taft Avenue. Have lot lines back here, and then that's the rear property line right there. So this would be its own separate parcel right here. Nothing proposed there as far as development, other than what's, than a single-family residential at this time.
But probably someday it'll be something different than that, right? Would you say?
Um, no, no, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. I, I, you know, if one day, years down the road, there was some application, obviously it could be some sort of variance or something, but at this time, no, we wouldn't have any, any proposal at this time for that parcel.
Not even to build that one, right?
Uh, the one would, would meet code, which, which we could move forward with, but at this time, we don't have a plan to build right now, so.
You're getting ready for something. Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant, other questions? No, okay. So. Okay, you can, could you just point that out for them, what you're doing?
Sure.
Do, excuse me, excuse me. We're not, we're not having public comment, but if you have a question, can you come up here so we can record it, hear it? And we'll try to get an answer for you.
Kathy DiO. We couldn't see anything, so I don't know what you mean by service.
He's going to show you that. Anything, anything else?
I could show you, yes. So by serviced, I mean serviced with a water ladder, water line that would come in like this up to a new house. And then also a driveway end right there for one house. Correct.
Okay, we can't have private discussions here in the middle of a meeting. Thank you. Is it, and sir, you want to see, do you understand now what's going on, or do you want, I should point it out on the diagram there for you. Someone else raise a question there.
I, Lenish Shafar from Farrington. I can't even figure out where Farrington is on the map.
Okay, he'll show you that. So your question? Yeah, thank you.
So up here, Farrington runs along this side, and while we're calling it 0 Farrington, is that probably has the most frontage on Farrington. It's not a built street, just a paper road. It's just on a map. Winter Street's up here. Right? So these two houses face Winter Street. Both driveways come out to Winter Street right there. Berkeley, you got me there. I don't have that one on here. Right, Farrington's up here. Farr, Farrington ends like right here with a, with a, with a, with an actual road. It extends down here on paper, but it's not built. Yeah, north would be this way. I'm not sure where Berkeley is, but I know Taft is right here. Yeah. Sure.
Farrington goes all the way to Winter Street, so there's, there's a little confusion. So the paper Farrington is here.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Um, but Farrington does come all the way out onto Winter Street, and there's houses up against the back of that property. Right, there's no entrance, there's no, nothing. Uh, yeah, good, good luck. There's no, there'll never be a street there. Berkeley, I think, is a dead-end street, correct?
I'm on 12 Berkeley.
Yeah, it's a dead end.
Hamilton Avenue, Farrington.
I have no idea where Berkeley is. Okay. Yeah, I have no idea. Yeah, and it's all, it's septic there, correct? So there's no city sewer, just, so as far as development, probably not much.
Okay. All right, any questions based on that? So. First order of business would be to recognize this as an unlisted action under seeker. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'd like to move this to declare it an unlisted action under seeker.
Second?
Second.
Excuse me. We can't hear up here. Did we have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Secret determination? Negative deck?
I'd like to move to declare this as a negative declaration under seeker.
Second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
So I'd like to move to schedule it. Like to move to declare the application complete.
Let's do that. Is there?
I second that.
Second?
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously. Now we're.
I'd like to move to the, schedule a hearing, public hearing for June 17th on this lot line adjustment.
It's going to be a busy day, isn't it?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. See you on the 17th. The next item, we're going to skip the next item to take the last item first, because that's going to be brief, I think. So PL PC 2025-0030, 260 Huzick Street. Is the applicant here?
The owner of the property couldn't make it today, but I, I'm here to represent him.
Okay, and your name?
My name is Bomick Patel.
Thank you. You have any comments for the board, information for the board, or just here to answer questions?
So, so far, the project will be aimed to get it done, is to get the outside old building that looks like, we want to just get that upgraded to the, and we've been having a lot of accidents where customers tend to drive into the building. And in last, within last 18 months, probably four accidents. So our goal is to get the boullards up in parking spots, so to prevent and safeguard the building.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Tony?
There was quite a few comments on the staff report. Has that all been fixed?
I'm concerned about the traffic safety issues, I think.
Many, many of the items that were actually addressed in terms of like the accuracy of their documents, in terms of what's not really addressed is the discussion regarding the parking lot and what kind of fixtures might prevent automobiles from crashing into the building.
Hey, good, Tony, you got?
As long as, I mean, some of the questions were incorrect and all this has been.
So the, the, their short EAF, some of their, like, there's auto, auto-allocated responses to some of the questions that they answer, too. I found that their short EAF, the resubmitted one, which is in your packets right now, does address some of, most of those, those elements. I would have a, you know, discussion about what their complete streets form shows in terms of like the curbs. The application itself has been updated and addresses a bunch of these, although we're still looking to get some sort of clarity on some of the items that you could probably provide to us for the next meeting.
Right. Items such as, you know, the curb cuts and the complete streets form can also be addressed when the applicant has to take out a, you know, right-of-way permit and applies for the building permit. So we'll have a chance to iron those things out with the applicant before they can actually start work. We're also looking into getting the contractors out and get their ideas and inputs in to figure out how to control the traffic, especially on a one of the end. We have a hundred feet, hundred foot of opening, and we're trying to minimize that open space where drivers pass through the parking lot at high speed.
Yeah, I go my doctors that way.
So we have a little more work to do, so we're saying.
It's up to you guys.
So staff is, is okay with?
The form, the forms they've provided are okay, in terms of whether or not you believe that the items that are within the site plan are. That's, that's your discussion to have.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. I guess first order of business would be to recognize this as a type two action. Is there a motion to that effect?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we declare this a type two seeker.
Second?
Second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries unanimously. If you're so inclined, I guess in that, that.
No. Type two does not require further review.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. So now we can determine if it's complete.
Is everybody happy with it?
I think there's more work to do on the site plan, from what I'm hearing, because we haven't fully determined, you know, whether we're secure with the, the access off Huzick Street. From what I'm hearing, am I correct?
Yes, but both those elements are either within the city's right-of-way or New York State, New York State DOT's right-of-way and Huzick, or ours on 19th Street. So the, the elements regarding, you know, the traffic entering the parking lot are tied in to discussions with the city of 19th Street in our right-of-way and with DOT for anything that would affect Huzick Street in their right-of-way. So I think that an argument could be made that these, you know, issues could be resolved, you know. Now you can consider, if the market is complete today, right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't.
It's up to you, but I, I don't have a major objection with working those elements out with the, the applicant.
So as far as the application itself, we, we can say that their paperwork is in order and it's complete. Correct. Yes, that's a good way to put it. I'd like to make a motion to declare the application complete.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously. Schedule a hearing.
I'd like to move to schedule a hearing on June 17th.
Second?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Just before, before we wrap that up, I just want to make sure that you guys do have any sort of, if you guys have any advice or recommendations for what you might like to see on the site plan specifically. He's mentioned that he would be going to his contractor to get some ideas. But, you know, this is your forum in terms of the site plan review.
Yeah, I think.
Elements that you'd like to see, then we should say so now.
I think it's really biggest issue here is the safety concern. That should be worked out between, you know, the building department, DOT. You know, this whole thing was driven by accidents, is what you're saying.
It's mostly customers coming in off the Huzick Street.
Right.
Not exiting out.
So, you know, this, that brings up the question of delineation and signage and curb cuts and all of those things.
That's all your purview.
Well, it's a multi-use site, right? There's a bank.
Yes.
On the other side.
That's under the street, but this is a corner lot.
Right.
And the building has two-sided parking spaces, one coming off the, the bank street.
Right.
That goes in. And the other one is right off the Huzick Street.
Right. I guess what I'm getting at is, it sounds like a, I've seen this, I've been by there. Is there, is there something that's causing this all of a sudden? Because, I don't know, has it always been that way?
I've been there only three years.
Yeah.
And it's within last year, year and a half, that's when we seen the spike in accidents.
So is it because people are trying to, to cut across what were old curb cuts, which is sidewalk now?
Right. So there is, me and Eric actually spoke about it in last time when I met him at his office. Because people going to the bank or coming out the building behind it, they, there is a no left turns, yeah, no left turn sign. So they use the parking space at very high speed coming up, no stop sign there, so they just try to attempt to make the turn.
Right. So the issue is partially your site plan, but mainly it's, it's, you know, you have, you have DOT, which is Route 7.
Right.
And then you have a city street, and we want to direct the cars coming in off Huzick Street onto the city street into your curb cut.
Correct.
Is there a way to elevate the, where people are cheating across the parking lot now?
Yeah, in a way, yes.
All right.
Okay, anything further? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, that's, that's a recommendation.
But the entrance way is Huzick. You can't put homes.
There's two entryways onto the property. If you, if you go in off, you can go in off Huzick, or you can take a right onto 19th Street.
Yeah.
Not on Burdette, but 19th Street empties out on the Burdette, but 19th Street goes into. You can, you can enter the parcel off of 19th Street, which is just like, I don't know, 50 yards long.
19th?
I can pull it up here.
Is that, is that? That's, I guess, to the west of the bank?
Here, why don't I do a screen check?
Bank, it's between the bank. And then there's a street that goes in, there's all kinds of doctor's offices.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it comes up and around and goes off of Burdette.
So, right, but there's already homes there. There's already speed bumps on that.
That's, that's not on the parcel. So if you look at the screen, you're gonna see Huzick Street beverage under the cursor. And then here's your entryways here. There's actually a curb cut for two entrances on each side. Over here, there is no curb cut, so this is considered 19th Street up until this stop sign, or that stop marker. So it's very short, but you can take a right onto 19th Street and then, you know, enter the parking lot here. Does that clarify anything?
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't know that was called 19th Street.
I didn't either.
Okay.
So they're going to figure out what they need to do, and then we're gonna figure out whether or not that's what we want.
Got a question, sir?
Yes, may I?
Yes.
So, I was looking at the.
You state your name for the record, please.
Sorry, Alec Lindman. I was looking at the parking spaces and the two sides of the building. On the west side of the building, which is to the right in this image, there are two blocked off spaces and then space for two additional spaces on the corner of the building there. On the 19th Street, Huzick Street corner. And it occurs to me that if that sidewalk and curb cut on Huzick Street were completely closed off. And those parking spaces relocated to a single row that spanned the entire width of the western frontage of the property. You would retain the same number of parking spaces, move the service functions into that now dead end space. By closing off that frontage on Huzick Street, you eliminate the left turn problem. So I suggest the board consider that option.
Thank you.
So would he be the one that have to put in the curbs himself? Would, would the gentleman that owns the property have to put in those curbs on Huzick Street himself, or would the city do it?
My understanding is that curbs and sidewalks, you know, lining a property are the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay. Nothing further on this application, right, at this time? Okay, so the next item is PLB, PLPB 2025 0029, 1011 Second Avenue. Appropriate Starlight Developers.
And you want me to use your data trouble?
Sure.
Go ahead, sir.
Hey, good evening. I am Joe Dannable, Environmental Design Partnership. Here tonight with John Earn of Couch White. We are the. We are the representatives for Starlight Development in their application for a PDD at 1011 Second Avenue in the city of Troy. Brief overview of the project. So the project is located at 1011 Second Avenue. We're about a quarter mile north of the intersection with Broad Street or the Hannaford Plaza in that area. It's an 11 acre property. About 10 of it is in the city of Troy, and there's a small section on the north end that's within the town of Scaticoke. Very little to no development is occurring there. I think we just have a trail going down to the water for our kayak launch that goes into the town, the rest of the development. All the parking, all the units and everything is in the city of Troy.
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
It's, it's, it's broken. So you might want to just, you might just want to hold the microphone.
How about that? So here we go. Yeah, if you can go to maybe the third slide, you can get it up. So the project itself consists of two buildings and 175 units. To, for everyone's orientation, north is to the right on this map. The Hudson River running north-south is on the top, and Second Avenue is on the bottom of the map. So the building to the south or the left-hand side of the map is a 75 unit, four-story building with a parking garage underneath. The second building or the north building is a 100-unit building with a parking garage in four stories over the parking garage as well. We have parking for 307 vehicles, which gives us a parking ratio of about 1.75 parking spaces per unit. And that's between the subsurface parking and the surface parking. We also have parking available for long-term and short-term bike parking. We have various amenities on the site. We have a trail that runs from Second Avenue along the riverside between the buildings and the river. Along that, we have a gazebo interpretive signage. We have a parking area for use by city residents or a access for kayak, small craft launching onto the river. We also have a sidewalk connection from the project heading down south on Second Avenue to the Hannaford Plaza itself. Project itself connect to public sewer, public water. We have a New York State compliant stormwater pollution prevention plan proposed as part of the project. As you can see, we are preserving a large number of trees. Hop onto the next slide. We have a large number of trees we're preserving, particularly along the waterfront and also along the northern end of the property within the town of Scaticoke. So the project itself, if you go back to the third slide. The project itself and all the improvements are outside of the floodplain, again, with limitation of this section of the trail, which goes down to the river. Is the only improvement within the designated flood zone for this property. We've submitted our application material. We understand we've received some comments from planning staff. We've also read some of the public comments that have come in. This is our first meeting in the introduction of the PDD to this planning board. We understand we will be back for, to provide additional information, at which time we will have the application team complete, go through the secret process and continue review. We did want to have this somewhat of an introductory meeting with this board to present the project. Present the project, receive any comments that the board may have at this point in time, so we can incorporate them into future submissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
How did it go with the Troy Fire Department? Any, anything that they're required to review over in a buck?
So we, we just got the comments from the planning staff about fire apparatus. What we have shown on the plan is a compliant plan with the international fire code. The buildings are sprinkled. We can get fire trucks within 300 feet of all points of the building. So that does meet international fire code. We do want to have a meeting with the, the Troy Fire Department to make sure we're accommodating them to the best of our ability. Looking at the turning radii around the circle, we do have figures where we have provided turning movements for the Troy fire truck to go around there, so we show that to them and accommodate them. But again, we do want to have a meeting with them prior to the next meeting to make sure we can address their concerns.
Any questions?
I have one. Your trail, your bike trail, that comes in on Second Avenue and it goes all the way around the back and all the way over to the kayak, and then down to the river. I noticed that on mine, it's black. I don't have green, but is that, will that path continue on your north side to come out on Second Avenue also? So that it's one complete loop and not just going in and coming all the way down to? Second Avenue South?
So the trail itself will not connect, however, connected to the trail is a series of sidewalks within the property that do have a secondary connection onto Second Avenue. If you look at the plans, so here the brown identifies the trail, the kayak launch, and then we have a continuous sidewalk throughout the property connecting and bringing you back out to Second Avenue.
Okay, yeah, I can't see that. Okay.
A couple of things I did forget to point out. This area down here. We're preserving as a park in open space. There's a lot of large trees in that area. We're preserving a significant amount of that existing vegetation in those larger trees. To create a high canopy park-like setting for the trail to pass through and head over into the kayak launch on the north end of the site as well.
Okay, so if you, if you have your path going through the woods, would that be lit?
There is lighting on the trail, yes.
Okay.
Again, these woods are very open woods. It's a high canopy. We're probably, you know, 20, 30 feet between trees with no wonder story vegetation, because it's such a thick canopy.
So how high do you think your building is going to be from the canopy? Of those trees? 20 feet higher, 30 feet higher?
I would say, based upon what we have done, the top of that building is going to be probably around the same height as a portion of that vegetation in particular. This vegetation here is very large and mature, so our buildings will not. Should not be above that. Again, we don't have an accurate height. Those trees are about 70 to 80 feet tall. Our building is not that high, but it does sit a little higher on the site. Over here, the vegetation is not as mature. This building may sit slightly above that tree, that tree line.
So basically, everything to the north is. Probably gonna be blocked by those trees, so you're not going to be seeing a lot from the river.
I'll say blocked during the summer months, obviously during the winter months.
Deciduous trees, yeah.
When there's vegetation on, it's gonna be a very filtered view. When the vegetation's off, it'll be, you'll have a much better view of the building.
So your sidewalks and trails are gonna be open to the public, just mosey out, throw down the trail and whoever.
Yeah, the trail is definitely open to the public. Sidewalks on the site are certainly going to probably end up being used by public.
So you're just gonna have a launch area. There's no dock there.
Correct. No dock. Essentially, what we have is a gravel trail down to the, the edge, the edge of the, the water that you can slide kayaks, news, small watercraft like that is there.
Anything further, folks?
We also want to state, you know, we believe this is a type one action. We've asked the board to commence with a coordinated review of the project.
Any further discussion here before we consider that? All right, so we can consider recognizing this, recognizing this. Is it type one action? Consider recognizing this as a type one action? Is there a motion? Not tonight. You have, do you have a motion or want to table this? Determine, recognize it as a type one action, and then we could either make a declaration or not table that part of it. First, first order of business would be to recognize it as a type one action.
If we.
Motion to recognize it as a type one action, secret.
For a second?
Second.
Now, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business would be to consider whether or not you want to make a secret declaration tonight?
No, just.
Question, question before you is whether or not you want to be lead agency for a coordinated review.
Right.
So we said before, you don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 did you have a comment?
Yeah, so I, I think our request would be for the board to be lead agency, so we would ask the board to circulate, well, we would work with Eric's office to, uh, circulate lead agency notice to all involved and interested agencies.
So that is the question, you, are you inclined to take lead agency status at this time, or?
I think the, this is the first presentation to this board, you know, there's a long history here, you know, we tried to dig into this a little bit, I don't know that we're ready. To make that kind of commitment, yeah. So, you know, I'd like to move to table this, until we have enough information where we as a board can determine whether we should be lead agency on this or not. There's gonna be a lot of interaction with all different kinds of groups that would have to answer to us, and it might not be appropriate, might be appropriate. It's a ways before we could go to the city council with this to approve the PDD, so I'd like to move to table this until we have more information as a board.
Just determine if I may.
I second that. Discussion on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, the motion carries unanimously, the matter's tabled. Any other business come before the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, the motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Oh, no, actually helps. Yeah, you can just use our wifi.